This meeting is being recorded.
Okay, hey everyone.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Oh, I'm good because I've been having trouble.
Okay.
Let me see if my camera works. Uh, I can't see me at all on that. Can you see me?
No, I see it's black, but as long as we can hear you. Um, I think that'll be good. Ms. Ware, are you able to hear Commissioner Fields?
I hear Commissioner, was that Commissioner Fields? Yes, I heard him.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
No.
Yeah, not sure what's going on with the camera, but I, I hear everybody perfectly. Thank you.
That's perfect. You're welcome. Let me go and change my name. I am not Director Smith. All right, and Commissioners, I'm not sure if you all, um, saw the email that I sent with the, um, I sent a few emails, so one of them has the information for the Overly District. The other email has the staff report and another email has the, um, with the draw email from the applicant. So we don't have a case to go over for this evening and it will only be, um, the elections for this evening. Commissioner Lovey, I am going to make you a panelist. I do have you as an attendee.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Uh, let's see here. Got one, two, three, four, five. We have a quorum.
Yeah.
We, we have a quorum. We had an agenda with one case which has withdrawn. And so we've got a quick night. It is Friday Eve. And I'm going to not stand in one's way. Forget it's Friday. All right, so just another couple of minutes. Um, Ms. Solomon, do we have any, um, just attendees this evening, just observers?
No, we do not.
Okay, thank you. Madam Attorney, how are you this evening?
Amazing. How are y'all?
Good.
Pretty good.
Glad to hear that. Okay. Ms. Dbury, how are you?
This is actually Officer Mitchell who wrote the tickets.
Okay.
Officer Mitchell, okay, how are you?
I'm fine. How are you?
Good. We actually, I'm not sure if you are aware, but that case has withdrawn.
Okay.
But glad that you were able to join us and if you could just hang on with us for a second. Um, so we will, um, go through our agenda, but just wanted to let you know that that case has withdrawn.
Okay.
All right, excellent. Um, all right, it is the seven o'clock hour, so, um, and we do have a quorum, but what I'll do is I'll first officially start the meeting and then we'll establish a forum officially. Ms. Ware, can you hear everything? Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you so very much. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Sean Atkins, Chair of the East Point Planning and Zoning Commission. At this time, I'll call our regularly scheduled February sixteen twenty twenty three meeting to order. Staff, would you please sound roll call to establish rapport?
Yes. Commissioner Presley?
Here. Good evening, everyone.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioner Fan.
Yeah, good evening.
Commissioner Loveit.
Good evening, present.
Thank you. Commissioner Mark Fields.
Good evening, everyone, present.
Thank you. Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner McKnight.
Present.
Thank you, Commissioner Bryant. I'll unmute you. Let's see, or ask you to unmute. Commissioner Bryant.
Good evening, everyone, present.
Thank you. Commissioner Joseph Fields.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair. You are awesome here.
Yes, present.
Quorum, everyone's present for this evening.
Okay, excellent. Um, ladies and gentlemen, if you would, please join me in a moment of silence. All right, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, our agenda has been sent out to us, um, by our staff and everyone should have a copy of the agenda. It is now on the screen. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Presley, that we adopt our agenda as presented. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it, our agenda is adopted. There is no old business for this evening. We will then move on to new business. Our first item under new business is the election of officers as is prescribed by the bylaws for the East Point Planning and Zoning Commission that officers shall be elected at its regularly scheduled February meeting. Commissioners, the way that I would like to do this, there is no objection. I would, there are three offices that we will need to elect this evening. Those would be the Provisional Chair. It would be the Vice Chair and the Chair of the Commission. And so what I'd like to do is I'd like to entertain a motion to open the floor for nominations for the entire slate of officers. Um, and then once we have a slate of officers, I will then entertain a motion to close the nominations and then we will call the question. So Commissioners, at this time, I will entertain a motion to open the floor for nominations for the officers, for the offices of Provisional Chair, Vice Chair and Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Loveit.
I move that we open the floor for election of Provisional Mayor, I mean Provisional Chair, um, Vice Chair and Chair.
All right, thank you. You're trying to elevate us already. Is there a second? It's been moved by Commissioner Loveit, seconded by Commissioner Fan, that we open the floor for nominations for the offices of Provisional Chair, Vice Chair and Chair. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. The floor is open for nominations. We'll start with Provisional Chair.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Bryant.
I make a motion that we elect the Provisional Chair, uh, Ms. Loveit.
Commissioner Loveit, okay. Um, Commissioner Loveit, you have been nominated, um, to serve, to, to appear on the slate for the Office of Provisional Chair. Is that a nomination that you will accept?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other nominations for Provisional Chair? Okay, hearing none and seeing none, we'll move to the Office of Vice Chair. Vice Chair, are there any nominations for the Office of Vice Chair?
Mr. Chair, I nominate, uh, Commissioner McKnight.
Okay. Commissioner McKnight, you have been nominated to serve on, to, to appear on the slate for the Office of Vice Chair. Do you accept the nomination?
Yes.
Ooh.
With a lot of enthusiasm.
Yes, yes, yes.
That's a yes.
I was caught off guard a little bit. Yes, sure.
Okay. All right. Are there any other nominations for the Office of Vice Chair? Any other nominations for the Office of Vice Chair? Okay. At this time, we'll move to the Office of Chair. The floor is open for nominations for the Office of Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Loveit.
I nominate, uh, Sean Atkins Chairman as the, um, of the Commissioners.
Okay. And, and I will accept the nomination. Thank you so very much. The floor is still open for the Office of Chair. Are there any other nominations for the Office of Chair? Hearing none and seeing none, Commissioners, at this time, I entertain a motion to close the nominations.
Motion to close the nominations.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Fan, that we close the nominations for the offices of Provisional Chair, Vice Chair and Chairman for the East Point Planning and Zoning Commission. Are there any comments, questions or concerns? All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it, the nominations are closed. Commissioners, our slate of officers, as have been nominated and accepted by this body, are as follows. For the Office of Provisional Chair, Commissioner Patricia Loveit. For the Office of Vice Chair, Commissioner Gina McKnight. And for the Office of Chair, Sean Atkins. At this time, Commissioners, I would entertain a motion to accept and approve this slate of officers.
So, Ms. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Presley.
I make a motion that we accept this slate of candidates and officers to this year's, uh, Planning and Zoning Committee.
Okay, is there a second?
Definitely a second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Presley, seconded by Commissioner Miller, that we accept the slate of officers for the twenty twenty three, um, calendar year for the offices of Provisional Chair, Vice Chair and Chair for the East Point Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, comments, questions or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. So we have new offices. Congratulations, um, Commissioner McKnight and congratulations, Commissioner, um, Loveit. Thank you all so very much for your continued confidence in me to serve as your leader and the Chair of this organization. I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is case number two zero two two U dash zero zero one dash one two. The applicant is one two eight zero Sylvan Road LLC. Staff, would you please sound the caption for this agenda item?
Chairman, in reference to case number one under new adj- agenda, case number twenty twenty two U dash zero zero one dash one two. The applicant is twenty one eighty Sylvan Road LLC. The property is located at twenty one eighty Sylvan Road. The applicant is seeking a special use permit to establish a automobile towing, uh, facility in Iwan Light Industrial Zoning District. And the case, the case type is a special use permit.
Okay, thank you.
I would also like to state that the applicant sent a letter of, um, requesting withdrawal on the application.
Okay, thank you. Um, and with that, and for the record, uh, Madam Attorney, because the applicant has requested to withdraw, um, this, of course, was advertised for a public hearing. If this body, um, do we need to dispose of the request to withdraw? As our next appropriate step?
I had to get to a place where there was no background noise, so forgive the delay.
Okay, no worries.
You should have seen me run into the outside, but your question is whether or not you need to dispose of this case. If there's been a request to withdraw, then the commission can simply, um, approve that request to withdraw and not proceed with any of the procedural requirements of a public hearing and the motion would be simply, we accept a motion to accept the request to withdraw and not move forward with a public hearing.
Okay.
So if it does come back, you realize that we would have to start the process all over.
That is exactly correct, which is why I wanted it to be for the record. Thank you so very much. Commissioners, you've heard the opinion of our attorney and so at this time, um, you've also heard from the Director that the applicant has made a request to withdraw. And so Commissioners, at this time, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Miller.
I'd like to make a, uh, motion that we accept the, um, the withdrawal of the applicant's application.
Okay.
And, okay, thank you, Commissioner Loveit and Commissioner Miller, with that request that also then would cease any of the procedural, um, actions that would need to be taken with the case. Is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
Okay, and Commissioner Loveit, is your second still standing?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, there is a motion on the floor to accept the applicant's request for withdrawal, which would also then, um, and, and the motion also would then nullify any of the procedural actions that would normally accompany a, a, a case such as this. That motion was made by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Loveit. Are there any comments, questions or concerns? Okay, hearing none. While we have this open and before we dispose of the case, we are joined by the officer that, uh, wrote the citation, Officer Mitchell. Officer Mitchell. And I had made a request for Officer Mitchell to attend, um, the meeting because there were several questions. Um, I guess it is, um, it is, it is okay that the applicant has requested to withdraw and we are about to, um, call the question on that request. But my, my question is, um, around citations for code violations and this particular one, Officer Mitchell, can you tell us exactly what the citation was for? We did get a copy from staff. I could not clearly ascertain what the violations were.
Okay, the copy that you received, Mr. Chairman, that was a copy of a letter. It was not a copy of the citations.
Okay.
The defendant actually received four citations. Two was for him in his name for, um, not having a business license and not having a CO. And the other two was for the actual company. We actually cite both because the company can't physically come in and represent themselves.
Okay. Were there other outside of the business license and the, the certificate of occupancy, were there other, um, violations of code, um, present at the site?
At the time, no, because they were operating as a extension of a towing company that's actually located in Duluth. So therefore they had the vehicles on the property and they just hadn't, the business itself, not the business in question that actually motioned for this hearing, that wasn't the business that I cited. That is the owner of the property.
Okay.
Which is not the same people.
Okay. Because there seem to be other violations, particularly with the physical condition and upkeep of the site, um, which is of great concern, um, to particularly many of the residents who live in that area. The very first residential neighborhood is the Jefferson Park neighborhood, the neighborhood in which I live. And so, you know, having to go up and down Sylvan Road, getting on one sixty six and seeing that. So there seem to be several violations on the site outside of, I mean, you know, we wouldn't be able to visually see that there is no business license or a certi- certificate of occupancy, but there seem to be several other, um, violations and you're stating that there weren't any at the time of the citation?
Because it was operating as a towing company. Their business, it's to tow in wreck vehicles. These vehicles actually was towed in from accidents. So therefore I couldn't actually give them a violation for derelict vehicles because that's actually what they do. Okay, and if they have parts on the, the grounds, they're actually towing these things and when they actually takes them off the lift, they lose parts. So from going from one towing company, because you know, as you know, from Sylvan Road, we range from a huge variety of towing companies that's on that particular road. That because the company actually deals with derelict vehicles, we can't cite them for derelict vehicles. But now, we were waiting for the hearing and the courts, if they do not get a business license or a CO, now I can cite them for derelict vehicles. Because now it's just a parcel of land that's not supposed to be used as commercial use at this point because they don't have a business license or a CO to do so.
So we're not able to cite them because they don't have a license or a certificate of occupancy? We would have to wait until they are a legitimate business in East Point before we can cite them?
No, that's not what I said. I said, because if they were, okay, let's say tomorrow hypothetically, tomorrow that they were issued a CO as a towing company. And in doing so, they automatically is issued a business license for a towing company. If they have the mesh on the gate, which is required by the code and everything is behind the gate, which cannot be seen because the mesh is on there, then no, I cannot cite them for inoperative vehicles because that is a part of their business. When they apply, they have to state what their business is. So I can't say you have junk vehicles on your property when technically that's what they do. They tow inoperative vehicles.
Um, um, Officer Mitchell, I am going to, um, respectfully disagree a little bit on that, so help me to understand, okay? So I believe that they, that there is a possibility for them to be cited for derelict vehicles. When a vehicle gets to a site and that vehicle does not move and it stays there for months and for years, at what point does that site become a junkyard? And junkyards are illegal in, in, in this zoning classification. Is that correct?
Correct.
So at what point does that site become a junkyard? Because what I can share with you, having driven up and down Sylvan Road more times than I can count and there is an automobile repair shop, there's another tow facility and all of those things. They're vehicles that you know how you say you stayed at your welcome, worn at your welcome? They've worn out their welcome. They're junkyards. So my question is, how does the city maintain any type of record or status on those vehicles coming and going? Because it seems like these towing facilities are actually becoming junkyards.
And I agree. I totally agree. But the ordinance does not state how long a vehicle has to be on the property before it's considered a junkyard. That's why, because I looked at it. That was a problem for me. I've been here five years. I've been in the same area, that area for five years. And that was a problem for me because it is no set time to say that vehicle has been on this property too long. It should be fixed or it should be removed. So that is part of what needs to be critiqued, motivated.
That is a thousand percent fair, okay? Because I cannot hold you to a standard or hold you to enforce something that is not on the books. And so I am so very glad that you showed up this evening. Um, Madam Attorney Wiggins?
I am here.
Okay, thank you. And Director Smith, can we pull for work session for next month? Um, any of the zoning classifications that allow tow facilities or junkyards in the city of East Point? And can we have a work session around these things? I also would like to entertain proposed text amendment. I am very challenged that Sylvan Road, along with a few other roads in the city, are gateways into our city. So once you turn at one sixty six onto Sylvan Road, head it south, that's your first entry point into East Point and what do you see? Tow facilities, which have really become junkyards. And so, um, I would like for us to have a discussion and a work session around, um, that language so that we can craft, um, a proposed text amendment. So thank you so very much, uh, Officer Mitchell. I would also state that code enforcement, if you had the, um, the pleasure of reading my email, you could probably tell that is a thorn in my side. Okay. Um, and I think that it is not fair to the citizens of the city to have to suffer for situations like that. So unfortunately, Ms. Dbury is not here as the manager for code enforcement because I believe that there needs to be a tighter working relationship. You can't enforce what's not on the books. We don't know what's not on the books if the, the folks who are out in the community doing the work are not, have not communicated that to us. But what you said is very fair and I get it. And so I would like for this commission, if it is without objection, that we deal with this issue, um, in a work session to craft, um, some proposed text amendment to our ordinance. Um, we've got Commissioner Loveit. I see your hand and so I have recognized you and you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, Officer Mitchell. Um, thank you so much for your being here, first of all. But in what you said, I got a little bit confused. Probably a lot confused. So if they don't have a CO and they don't have this really anything else to say, they can take the veh- wreck vehicles there, even though that's their business and the business owner is in Norcross, how are they able to just bring something here and drop it off?
Well, what they did was they didn't go through East Point. They actually went through the property owner. And of course, the property owner agreed because he was getting paid without even considering that that business needed a CO. Without even considering that that business needed a C O or a business license. Um, so it's it's some of the ownership for the property's responsibility, but it's definitely the business owner. Um, we find a lot of, I cite a lot of businesses that are renting locations. And the business and the property owner has no responsibility. I cite them. It's totally up to the business. I don't know if I answered your question.
You did, but it's just not right.
And it isn't, it it isn't. Um, but that's why we go around constantly when we see things like tow trucks going into locations. And on my computer, I go in and I see that, okay, it's no business supposed to be located here, it's no C O here. Then immediately, we cite on site at that point, we don't wait.
So the business that is allowing this to happen is a towing business, is that right?
It is not. It is not a towing business. It's just a person that owns the land, that that owns that parcel.
Okay, okay. Is anybody in the building? I'm assuming there's a building on this property.
It is a shed that is not being used. That's what brought attention to myself to say, okay, what's moving here? What's going on? Let me look up this property. And found that no one is supposed to be there because no one applied for a C O or a business license.
Okay, that makes it very clear. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Lovett, if you could lower your hand. I'm now recognizing Commissioner Fan. Commissioner Fan, you have the floor. Commissioner Fan, you on mute?
Me, myself. Uh, thank you so very much, Mr. Chair. You know, one thing that I had concern, I have concern about is the uh, Stonewall Road. And I don't know, I know that you cite for code and code violations. But I heard you say that mush fence was supposed to be there to cover up uh, that. But there's a water runoff problem because that that water comes off that hill. And then when you talk about purpose surface, well, not that surface is purpose, what caused would be part that and that that's that was a concern for me in terms of how do you get the stone, well, do you cite for Stonewall violations as well as for uh, the other violations that you saw?
I do not. I do not cite for Stonewall. Um, I don't have the certification to do so. But that is Officer Kiwi, she does that. So if that is an issue, I can bring that up with her. We work hand in hand.
Okay.
And she can go and get in touch with the person that has access to that property and go on there. And she can cite a whole different citation.
Okay, okay, okay.
So I will address that and get with her on tomorrow.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And if you could, Officer Mitchell, I think that you have my email address and maybe I sent. I think for that email, I'm not sure if it was the the whole commission. But if you could make sure either myself or staff has that um, response, then staff can then get that out to the entire commission, just so that everyone is in the loop.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments, questions, or concerns? Ms. D Berry, I also believe that uh, in addition to this structure on Silver Road being a temporary structure. There is another temporary structure that is located and has been there for years directly next to Roses Cafe. That is also a tow facility, that is a modular, that is on elevated something. But that's a temporary structure. And is there a reason why that business has not received a citation?
No, I can't. Every time, I actually have been there probably six times. Six times and knocked on that door and no one has answered. We don't have permission to just make entry. So we have to go by them, we have to depend on them answering the door or answering the phone or coming up to the department and accepting the citation. We can't send a citation by mail. A physical person has to sign for it.
So who was in the shed when you went to the shed to give the citation for twenty-one eighty Sylvan?
No one was in the shed. He was actually towing a vehicle and putting it on the grounds at the time. And I got in touch with the owner and the owner was actually sending him to meet me for to get the citation.
Okay, so um, I believe that there is activity at the other place as well. So that could be a sit and wait, a little coffee at Roses to that tow truck come up there. Um, that, I mean, I don't think a a community should be held hostage. If there are violations and whatever the city's rules are, we can't mail a citation, there has to be somebody. A community shouldn't be held hostage. I mean, that is a temporary structure. That structure has been there for years. Why should a community suffer? And the owners of the business can continue to do business, make money, all of those things, but they're in violation of city ordinances. That that doesn't make um, a lot of sense to me. Um, I see that our attorney has raised her hand. So Commissioner Fields, if you would, just give me one second. I'm gonna recognize Ms. Wiggins. I think she has an answer to my question or at least a response. Commissioner Wiggins?
I can be a commissioner. Uh, no.
Attorney Wiggins.
Uh, no, I was just going to say, Mr. Chair, in reference to your inquiry about how they're able to do so, it's because of due process. Violations of our code is quasi criminal. And so they have the they have the right to be noticed. And I think Officer Mitchell indicated that we require notice to be personal service. And they have the right to plead not guilty, have a trial, albeit a bench trial in our municipal court before there can be any enforcement of compliance with the code. And so that process can take months, right? If it goes through the court, if they seek to have a lawyer. And unfortunately, it does result in the community having to be subjected to whatever the violations are until the case is resolved.
So how do, or what are the tactics? And I guess we can talk about this in the larger context of the work session. Um, if Officer Mitchell states she's been numerous times, six times or so, and there's no one there. What is the remedy for that?
The remedy for not being able to personally serve the property, Arna.
Yes.
One thing I have seen in other jurisdictions is the the allowance of non-local property owners to be served in other ways, whether it be certified mail. We can post the property, you can serve by publication. So some alternatives to service can be written into the code when you cannot affect personal service. Um, that that's one way.
Okay, thank you. I I love the fact of posting the property, okay? Um, thank you so much. Okay, I'm gonna move now to Commissioner Joseph Fields and then we'll have Commissioner Presley.
Oh, thank you, um. Mr. Chair, I happen to have gone out to that property yesterday um, to uh, take a look at it. And it is, as you say, it it does look like a junkyard, more or less. Um, when the applicant was here at the work session, he said that the property was paved. That was one of the questions we put to him. And that question and the answer to that is no, it's not paved, no blacktop, anything like that. Besides the fence that's around it, it has a fence, but it's not eight feet uh, tall, which is required in the ordinance. It's like maybe a five-foot fence. You can still look over the top of it, what's going on back there. So you know, if they're gonna uh, apply for a business license, they should actually be in um, be in compliance with the requirements um, for them to actually occupy that space. Blacktop, eight-foot fence that's screened in. So those are the things I wanted to bring to your attention. Thank you.
Um, okay, thank you. Um, Commissioner Presley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, good evening again. I know this isn't the work session, but a thought of mine is following the uh, the attorney, the city attorney and also Commissioner Fields is when they come to renew their business license, while not impose a i- if they physically in three hundred and sixty-five days can't put the, get a signature from them to receive the citation. Add it to their business license when they come to renew. And if they choose not to pay the business license, they get another citation for that. And they also have to pay the previous uh, lien, if you will. The attorney can speak better to that, but I know it would have to probably voted into ordinance.
Yes.
That's also.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Presley, Commissioner Fields, Joseph Fields, if you could please lower your hand. I'm gonna take um, comment from Officer Mitchell and then we're gonna call the question if there are no other comments or questions.
Okay, so once they are in court right now and a part of my proposal before issuing a C O and part of their penalty is for them to be on a consent decree. That is a decree to make sure that everything is up to code before they can even get a business, like for us, get a C O. You can't operate a tow truck company on just dirt. Like you said, Commissioner Fields. So we would have required them to be up to code before they even can get a C O.
All right, thank you so very much. Okay, Commissioners, the motion on the floor for case number two zero two-two U is an umbrella dash zero zero one dash one-two is to accept the applicant's request for a withdrawal. And also that motion has been made and it would also include any of the procedural actions taken for such a case. Motion was made by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Lovett, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, all in favor of the motion, please sound aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
All opposed, please sound nay. Hearing on the ayes, have the motion carries, the body accepts the withdrawal. Our next item on the agenda are announcements. Director Smith, do you have any announcements that's good for the body?
I do, I do. Okay, yes, I'm off mute. Um, I just wanted to get everyone's input, if you were interested in taking that um, Atlanta Spring Community Academy from the Atlanta Regional Commission, which basically provides um, elected officials and really anyone um, providing can um, recommendations for any of our ordinances. It goes over um, how decisions are made by planning commissions, board of zoning appeals and pretty much all of the types of applications that come before you. It's a a training opportunity. And it's in our budget for anyone on this body that wishes to attend. It's oh, it's gonna be held over three days, I believe in is it, it's either April or March. Um, I may have sent the information out and I'll try to pull it up. So I'm talking, it's over three days. Um, the first session is March twenty-fourth, there are Fridays, three Fridays. Um, the second session is April twenty-first and the third session is May twelfth. So it's over three different sessions and it's all three sessions to get the certification of completion at the end. And the official title is Atlanta Regional Commission, Spring twenty-twenty-three Training for Planning Officials. And it's through their Community Planning Academy. So please let us know by email. Um, you can let us know in the chat if you're interested and we'll go ahead and and register you. And it's any of the Commissioners that are interested.
Thank you, Director Smith. Is there a deadline for interested Commissioners to respond to your appeal?
It is open now and let's see if they put a deadline. I'm checking to see, I don't see one in the announcement, but let me just double check on there. Sure, yeah. Yes, so it closes on March tenth.
Okay, great. Looks like we have a taker. It looks like Commissioner McKnight would like to sign up. Um, I've taken it so many years ago, it was really good back then. I think it's probably changed now because I'm sure it's been over twenty years since I've taken it. Um, but it was good then. Okay, all right. Uh, Direct- Director Smith, I'd like to uh, just check to make sure that you received my email. I am definitely interested in going as well.
Okay, thank you. I have you down, Commissioner.
Okay, excellent.
Yes, I think it's really good um, too, if some of the um, newer Commissioners, if they're interested, if you wanted to know some more about it, it's it's really informative. Um, uh, just to get a uh, idea of what's going on, though. I'm all for things change. It's a good exercise. I look forward to it, so.
So we've got two takers. Then y'all know that if we get another one, three is a party, so. Then all we need is another Commissioner.
I like to go.
Okay, Commissioner Joseph Fields, okay? And make sure that they, make sure that they um, address you in the proper way. East Point, party of three.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yes, it is. It looks like it's a party of four because I
Okay, okay.
Now it's a party. The party is growing, okay, excellent.
Thank you.
If there are other Commissioners, if you would, please um, send a communication to Director Smith um, regarding your interest in attending so that you can be registered. Okay?
Yes.
All right, I have no announcements. Yes, Commissioner Fields, Joseph Fields?
Yes, could you um, um, say the name of this particular seminar? What is it again?
It is called, the official name, it's the, it's the two thousand twenty-three Spring um, Community, what is the long name? I was on another screen. The official name is the Atlanta Regional Commission's Community Planning Academy and it's a three-part course for um, planning officials.
I'm gonna recognize Commissioner Lovett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, my announcement has to do with thanking um, Director Smith and her rock star staff for the meeting this past Saturday. So if you did not attend, you missed an opportunity to hear from the community and their questions regarding um, how do you get a permit and why there's so many problems and this and that. And there was a lot of good dialogue. And I think the city manager and um, Director Smith did a fantastic job in fielding questions. And the staff was there, all smiles and energetic and I got a chance to take a picture with all of them. So if you, if you, and I know Commissioner Bryant was there, but he left before we took the picture.
We were trying to, we were trying to find him. We were trying to find him.
But thank you so much. That was good. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that announcement and thank you, staff. Um, we echo the sentiments that Commissioner Lovett just stated about the staff. Thank you all. Um, I know that sometimes resources are short, manpower and all of those things and there's a lot going on. So thank you for all that you guys do.
You are welcome. And just so you know, the the city manager uh, formed a a team and so he is committed to providing resources to get our plan review, our ERP system, which is our permit tracking system that we have on. He's good, he's committed to getting everything on track and he, along with myself, I was very, very impressed with the entire permitting staff showing up to the meeting. I didn't ask them to come, you know, I didn't re- request it or make it mandatory. They showed up on their own because they care. And so I was just so elated that, you know, we built a team that really believes and cares about the work that we do. And the city of East Point and you all, the this community.
Okay.
One last statement, uh, um. Can you tell us a little about, little bit about the kiosk, the proposed kiosk?
Um, the proposed kiosk is actually gonna be an extension of our permit tracking system, the B S N A system. It's it's gonna be a digital screen, basically a computer inside of a a podium-style kiosk that would allow for any customers to walk up in our counter, our lobby and submit applications. And with that, the fact that it's in our lobby, they would be able to have um, in-person assistance if they're having trouble working through the system because I could tell you that it's very constable, um, cumbersome on our side. So I could on our side, so I could imagine how cumbersome submitting and uploading the the required petitions and applications and just filling out and going through the logistics of submitting a permit for something as simple as a fence or a deck or a pool, or just something random that you just wanna do some upgrades around your house. So we we're, we put in the budget a couple of years ago, and I think finally, we're gonna get the funding to have, start out with one. But it would allow for us to come out and assist in the lobby as well.
So I don't want to belabor this point, and I'm happy to hear that the city manager has assembled an eighteen. And just hearing what you said, Director Smith, I wonder if there's any thought around is this the best platform for our city? And are there other platforms available that are more intuitive? And easier to navigate for people, because people complain about the permitting process, and so perhaps it's not that it's the operator. You know, it's not the East Point staff, you know? But it could be the entire experience from beginning to end. If it is a system that is not very intuitive and is difficult for people to apply for very simple things and to upload documents and all of that, I can imagine that could be very frustrating. So perhaps there could be a look into, is this the best system for us? Are there other platforms available and see what that cost is and see if there's a cost benefit analysis to say, let's switch to this system. There's evidence based that it works very well, it gets high marks, it's easier to use, all of those things.
You are right on point, Chairman Atkins. He's considering all, any and all, he wants us to, you know, put everything out on the table for consideration. We're also assembling a focus group from the community members that were present and stated that they were interested in being in the focus group. So it's gonna be a holistic from internal perspective, from our staff, as well as interacting with the community, the users, the contractors. And, you know, just working through it, because this has been a long, long, long time coming, even well before any of us were here, and so I think everybody is ready to move forward, and I appreciate City Manager King, just, you know, having the support that he does for us to see how can we fix it and wanting to sit down with us and actually find out specifically what issues we're having along with the citizens, so so I'm I have good positive hopes about it making a change.
Excellent, all right. Thank you so much for that announcement, Commissioner Lovett, and the question of Director Smith. Commissioners, are there any other announcements that's good for the body? All right, hearing none, at this time, entertaining motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? Second, it's been moved by Commissioner Lovett, second by Commissioner Miller, that we adjourn our regularly scheduled meeting February sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. All in favor, sound aye. All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it, the meeting is adjourned. Officer Mitchell, again, thank you so very much for taking time out of your evening to join us for this meeting, I do greatly appreciate it. And again, I will follow up or have staff to follow up with Manager Dberry. Because if there are things that are prohibiting our code enforcement officers from being as effective as they could be, because there's no code for, then there's a gap. And so we would need to have text amendments so that we can solution that, because I think the city is suffering from a lot of code issues.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank, thank you, everyone, I appreciate you, have a great weekend.
Have a good evening.